And meanwhile, his partner, Suleika, is in the hospital dealing with lymphoma and throwing up as sick as she can be. It's just a very moving portrait, not only of a marriage, but of two artists. I cannot explain why it was a nominee. To me, it feels a lot like a slight of the documentary about Fred Rogers, Won't You Be My Neighbor by Morgan Neville back in 2019. That film was presumed to be the winner in the category before nominations were announced. It didn't even get nominated. The fact that American Symphony is not in the documentary feature race, to me, is an absolute tragedy.
And just quick, why would there have been a backlash?
I think people think that Matthew Heineman, who is a white filmmaker, wasn't the right person to tell the story of a black artist. If you look at the film on its own terms, which is all you should be doing, there's no way this movie doesn't get in. This is a great film. American Symphony deserves to be seen, and I cannot figure out that slight.
Yeah. Well, John Baptiste certainly thought he was the person to make the film. So there's that. And then, as we said, people who will be outraged that the actress Margot Robbie did not get an nod for playing Barbie and Greta Gerwig, didn't get an nod for creating it, but Billie Eilish got an nod for her song, so we're just going to go out on What Was I Made For? Entertainment reporter John Horn, always a pleasure. We'll have all of the nominees at hereandnow.org. Ceremony, March 10th. John, thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
You know what they say, Barbie has a great day every day. Ken only has a great day if Barbie looks at him. It's Here and Now.
The World Takes You Outside Your Borders and Connects You With the Most Important Events Happening All Across This Big Blue Marble.
We introduce you to memorable people whose stories will stay with you for a lifetime. I'm Marco Werman.
And I'm Carolyn Beeler, global news and inspiring voices that will keep you on top of the world.
Listen each weekday.
The World, Monday through Thursday afternoons at 3 on Radio IQ.
With the Radio IQ app, you are in control. You can pause and rewind our live broadcast, bookmark a show for later, and listen to your favorite programs on demand. The Radio IQ app. Download it today.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and simulating software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And Staples, with supplies and services to get business done, no matter where it gets done. From ink and toner cartridges to technology like laptops and networking accessories. More at Staples stores or staples.com.
It's Here and Now with a big moment in the fight against malaria. This week, Cameroon is the first African country to launch a vaccine to inoculate tens of thousands of children against the deadly disease. Every year, malaria kills about 600,000 people on the continent. That averages out to 1,600 or so deaths every day, mostly children under five. Let's talk about the vaccine with Andrew Joseph. He's Europe correspondent with our editorial partners at Stat News. Andrew, welcome.
Thanks very much for having me.
So experts are calling this a historic moment, this week's rollout, starting in Cameroon. Tell us about this vaccine, what it does.
Yeah, this vaccine is called RTSS, and it's made by GSK, the pharma company. And this is the first use of a vaccine, sort of in routine, of a malaria vaccine in routine use, so outside of a trial or pilot program. And basically, what this vaccine does is it sort of prevents the malaria parasite, you know, if it, if someone gets it, you know, after a mosquito bites them, it prevents them, prevents the parasite from really establishing an infection. It just sort of works to eliminate the parasite before it can start replicating and establish an infection.
Mm-hmm. And I read that the efficacy rate is around 30% of the late year. That sounds low.
You know, it's a bit higher than that, actually. So it's, you know, it's, you know, this is a multi-dose vaccine, so, you know, but if you get the four, the full four doses of the vaccine, the protection, it's thought to cut, you know, clinical cases by about 50%.
Okay.
But they've found that if you keep providing the vaccine seasonally, you can actually reduce cases by up to 75%. So it's a, you know, it's pretty highly effective, you know, and at the same time, they would say, communities should not let up on other, you know, steps to fight malaria, including bed nets. This is not a silver bullet, as they say, but it is a big step.
I understand, Andrew, that this does not stop malaria from spreading. Is that correct?
Well, you know, it doesn't prevent all cases. And obviously, it depends on the percentage of people that are given the vaccine. And this is primarily targeted at kids, and so malaria can still spread among adults, for example, but kids are the most vulnerable to, you know, frankly, dying from malaria. And so that's why they're targeting kids with this vaccine first, to prevent the most severe cases.
And stepping back, remind us what malaria is?
Yes, so malaria is a parasite, and it is spread, as we were talking about, by mosquitoes. So if you are bitten by an infected mosquito, a little bit of the parasite will slip into your bloodstream. And, you know, without a vaccine, for example, it will go into your liver and start reproducing like crazy, and that causes the infection. And once you're infected, if a mosquito bites you, you know, it can suck up some of the parasite back into it and then pass it on to other people. So this is actually the first vaccine, and there's another malaria vaccine being rolled out later this year. And these are the first vaccines against parasites. They're just much trickier to target than things like viruses or bacteria.
Yeah. How hard has it been to develop this vaccine? I imagine scientists, drug companies have been trying this for a while.
Yeah, you know, really decades. And part of the issue is that when the malaria parasites gets into, gets into your blood, you know, after a mosquito bite, it really, like, within a matter of hours, gets into your liver, and that's where it starts producing, reproducing like crazy. And once that happens, you kind of can't stop the infection from taking hold. You can treat it, but you can't really stop it. And so what they've had to do is they have this really narrow window of time to sort of wipe out the parasite before they get to the liver. So they've had to just sort of refine how to, how to get that done super quickly before the parasites have its chance to start replicating.
Hmm. So there's the vaccine, which, as you're telling us, has arrived. And then there's the project of getting it into people's arms, right? Cameroon is one of 20 African countries joining this effort. What are the logistical challenges?
Yeah, so like we talked about, this is a four-dose vaccine, and it's for kids, so that will require parents to bring their kids into the clinic, you know, several times over about a year. And so what they're trying to do right now is sort of line it up with other routine childhood immunizations. Other logistics are, you know, there's millions of people who may be wanting to get, you know, a malaria vaccine. And so what global health officials say is that between this vaccine, this RTSS vaccine that we've been talking about, and this other vaccine called R21 that's going to be rolled out as well later this year, and that was developed by University of Oxford scientists, there should be enough supply to meet global demand. You know, and then they're, like with any vaccine, it's a matter of, you know, there will be plenty of people who are really eager to get their kids this, but I'm sure there will be some people who take some convincing or may have questions about it as well. So there's a lot of community groundwork being done right now.
Yeah. And I want to ask you about the convincing part. In this country, in the U.S., we of course have witnessed widespread misinformation, lies about vaccines and their presumed risks. Is that kind of thing a factor in this campaign across Africa?
Yeah, that, that issue is not, not, not unique to the United States. And so that does happen in other countries, including in African countries. And so I think there will be some resistance to this vaccine among some people. But, you know, local groups, you know, there's a lot of international effort behind this vaccine, but there's also, they're partnering with sort of local groups, community groups, try to spread awareness about this vaccine, answer questions about this vaccine to, you know, obviously, maybe you can't eliminate, you know, vaccine hesitancy, but to try to minimize this. And, you know, I think a lot of people are like, see their kids get sick with malaria. And so if there is an option to protect them, you know, a lot of people will take it.
Andrew Joseph is Europe correspondent for our editorial partners at Stat News, the health and medicine publication. Andrew, thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Scott Tong in Washington, D.C.
Robin Young in Boston, this is Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from Vertex Pharmaceuticals, where cell and genetic therapies teams are committed to using innovation to create and deliver transformative therapies for people living with serious diseases. Information and career opportunities are at vrtx.com.
Something that I couldn't stop thinking about while these scenes were flashing on screen was, this looks really expensive. Did Congress approve the money for that? And if so, how much were they told?
Who so desire to stand for a moment of silence and to remain standing and join the board in reciting the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon, and welcome to our meeting for January the 23rd, 2024. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 P.M. Public hearings are held on the, at 7:00 P.M. on the fourth Tuesday of each month. There will be no 7:00 P.M. session tonight because there are no public hearing schedule. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RBTV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast Thursday at 7:00 P.M. and on Sunday from 10:00 A.M. until 5:00 P.M. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokeva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak into the microphone directly at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk of the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn all cell phones off or place on silent. Item A, opening ceremonies, number one, roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Item B, request to postpone, add to, or change the order of the agenda items. Are there any requests to postpone, add to, or change the order of the agenda, fellow board members?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kaywood?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lubeck?
No changes, sir.
Thank you. Item C, proclamations, resolutions, recognitions, and awards. Number one, resolution congratulating the Hidden Valley High School Girls volleyball team for winning the 2023 Virginia High School League VHSL Class III State Championship. At this time, I'd like Supervisor Radford to join me at the podium. Ladies, if you all will stand up and come up here around the podium. Form a circle, semicircle. And coaches as well. Good.
Right, right, come on, right.
Come on, right here.
Right here in front of the chair.
There you go. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask of the clerk, would please read the resolution?
Resolution congratulating the Hidden Valley High School Girls volleyball team for winning the 2023 Virginia High School League Class III State Championship. Whereas athletic competitions are an important and integral part of the curriculum at schools in Roanoke County, teaching cooperation, sportsmanship, teamwork, and athletic skill. And whereas, on November 18th, 2023, the Hidden Valley High School Girls volleyball team won the Class III State Championship at the Salem Civic Center. The Titans outscored Grafton in four sets, 25 to 19, 25 to 22, 25 to 27, and 25 to 19. And whereas, the team's highly impressive skills, versatility, and athletic talent were on full display, ultimately propelling Hidden Valley to secure its first state championship title since 2016. And whereas, Hidden Valley was also named River Ridge District Champions and VHSL Class III Region D Champions and ranked number one in the state of Virginia. And whereas, Hidden Valley ended its season with a school record of 33 to 1, leaving a lasting impression with its student athletes, opponents, fans, and the volleyball community. And whereas, the Titans showcased great character, poise, and sportsmanship while representing their school and community. They are a true asset to Roanoke County. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia, does hereby extend its sincere congratulations to the members of the Hidden Valley High School Girls volleyball team. Seniors Shay L., Clara Harding, Lauren Whitaker, and Kendall Wolf. Juniors Callie Anderson, Sophie Arnold, Maddie Carter, Meredith Crowley, Mackenzie Ferguson, Ella James, Chloe Monscaro, Camille O'Brien, and Callie Pahn, sophomore Camille Morstan, freshman Kenley Brown and Bryn Raymond, and manager Bella DeGonza. The team was led by captains Shay L. and Lauren Whitaker and Callie Pahn, and coached by Haley Quezenberry, Randy Klosterman, Mitch Peeler, and Jessica Raymond. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors extends its best wishes to the members of the team, the coaches, and their school in their future endeavors.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, as the Windsor Hills Magistral District Representative and a former parent of Hidden Valley Titans, I would like to make the motion to adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Supervisor Radford, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Madam Hooker. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Ms. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. And congratulations, ladies, and any discussion on the resolution that we just passed?
Yeah, you know, let me start off. Congratulations. You're always going to be a state champ now, and what a great, a great history to have. You guys have been a strong volleyball team for a long time. I know you'd had a dry spell there, but now you're state champs. Congratulations. You know, I, where are the captains? Who are the captains? Okay, you guys step forward. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to use them for a minute. Step right here, step right, you're going to talk in the microphone. So you, come on, come on. So you won the first two games, all right, and then the third game, you lost. So what were you guys thinking as captains for the fourth game? Just any of you, just tell me, what were you thinking?
We were not going to lose like we did last year.
Okay.
That's all I could think.
Okay. And so you're playing Grafton, right, high school? Have y'all been, played them before?
We did in a tournament last year, actually.
Uh-huh. And how'd you do?
We beat them, so we're pretty confident.
So I'm so glad you beat Grafton because we owed them one because they, my son was in the 2008 soccer semifinal, and Grafton beat them up in Radford University 2 to 1. So thank y'all for, for getting it back to Grafton. Any, any other comments y'all want to say about, you know, a great season, and how about next year?
I think it was a great season overall. I think that we all played together for a long time, and we joined each other's companies, so it was good, and I think a lot of us are excited for next year, so hopefully we can come back here.
Great, okay, very good. Any other comments?
Supervisors, any comments?
I have a quick comment, just wishing you best of luck going forward. You know, I predict that you will come back and that there will be some great things that go on with your team going forward. And, you know, just representing Roanoke County and Roanoke County schools, you all have been great ambassadors, so thank you. We appreciate what you've done for us, so best, best of luck going forward.
Thank you.
I want to congratulate you. I know Ms. Whitaker, and she has always told me about the exploits of your team. Did I hear correctly that there are only four seniors? So you're going to be a power next year, too. I'm looking at the rest. Congratulations. Looking forward to great things next year.
Thank you.
I just want to congratulate you. What an awesome experience, and it's something you will never forget for the rest of your life. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And ladies, are you all going to college? Any of you to play volleyball there? Are you going to concentrate on the academics?
I am.
Good.
Yes.
Good luck to you. And by the way, let's not forget the coach. Coach, you want to make any comments for us?
So y'all already know, words can't describe how proud we all are of you guys. I mean, playing in tournaments and beating 4A, 5A, and 6A teams, not only beating a specific team once, but five times, just proves how hard you guys work and put everything out there all the time. I'm excited to see what happens next year with you guys, and just congratulations, you all deserve the role.
And so at this time, I think we'd like to probably get a picture. Is that right? You want them to line up here, Amy?
Yes.
So just follow Ms. Whitaker's lead, and let's hold on to that. Coach, you want to get up there, too?
Congratulations, ladies.
You want this to be part of the picture? Amy, do you want this to be part of the picture?
Sure.
No, you're good. You're good.
Back over here. Me?
Get you and Haley to come up here.
Okay. Okay.
Josh, Josh.
Are y'all putting those arms around each other? Can I see it? These girls.
You can stand, you can stand up.
I don't think they can see these girls.
No?
They're figuring it out.
Okay.
Sure got everybody in. You can stand up.
Can you see it from any?
Okay, look over here, big smiles. One, two, three.
State champs.
And then look over at Mr. Whitlow one time.
Thank you all. Congratulations.
Yeah. Way to go. Katie, you, are you healed now?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the agenda to item two. Resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County to Stephen B. Turner, Chief Deputy Sheriff Lieutenant Colonel upon his retirement after more than 46 years of service. Chair recognizes Eric Orange, Roanoke County Sheriff. You join me at the podium. Mr. Turner, you might want to come on up here, too. Thank you. Steve?
I couldn't see it.
Let me make it. Okay, at this time, we'll ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
Resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County to Stephen B. Turner, Chief Deputy, Deputy Sheriff Lieutenant Colonel, Sheriff's Office, after more than 46 years of service. Whereas, Stephen B. Turner was employed by Roanoke County on September 16th, 1977. Whereas, Chief Deputy Turner retired on November 1st, 2023, after 46 years and two months of devoted, faithful, and expert service to Roanoke County. And whereas, Chief Deputy Turner has served as Deputy Sheriff, Deputy Sheriff Sergeant, Deputy Sheriff Lieutenant, Police Officer Lieutenant, Police Officer Commander, Chief Deputy, Deputy Sheriff Lieutenant Colonel, Sheriff's Office, throughout his employment with Roanoke County. And whereas, throughout Chief Deputy Turner's tenure with Roanoke County, he served the citizens throughout this valley with honor, dignity, and respect. Chief Deputy Turner retires as the longest-serving law enforcement officer in Roanoke County. We would like to congratulate and thank Chief Deputy Turner for his long tenure and many sacrifices to this community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County expresses its deepest appreciation and the appreciation of the citizens of Roanoke County to Stephen B. Turner for more than 46 years of capable, loyal, and dedicated service to Roanoke County. And further, the Board of Supervisors does express its best wishes for a happy and productive retirement.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the resolution? Sheriff Orange?
Thank you all very much for having us here today and for taking the time to recognize Steve. As you heard from the resolution, not only did he serve 46 years with the county of Roanoke as the longest-serving sworn law enforcement officer, but Steve started his service four years prior, 1973, enlisted in the United States Army as a military police officer. So he actually, at the conclusion of his career, had served 50 total years in law enforcement and public safety and public service. Everybody in this room that's, that's donned a uniform, everybody that's present here today can tell you at some point along the way in their career, they've had the opportunity to work with, and most of us, I believe, worked for Steve Turner. He has had a significant impact on many of our careers, and he has been a role model and example for a lot of us in his work and his hard work and dedication to the citizens of Roanoke County over the four-plus decades that he's served here. It's been a great honor to, to serve alongside Steve for nearly two decades myself, and it's, it's a privilege to be here today and see him recognized before the board. So we appreciate, again, you all taking the time to recognize him.
Thank you, Sheriff. At this time, let's move on and ask the clerk to call a roll on the resolution.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
And I thought I worked 39 years, was a long time, but I, I don't know anyone that's worked 46.
Yes.
But I'm pleased to say that you deserved a healthy retirement and a long retirement.
I appreciate the opportunity to work with everybody.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, have the mic.
I just take a minute, and I just want to let everybody know, I want to appreciate my wife first and my children. As you know, if you have a job, they're, they're your backbone. But also want to recognize that I've worked during that time with a lot of people in Roanoke County, Roanoke County employees, just about everybody in here I've had some dealings with. I've never met an unpleasant county employee, whether they're dealing with me or whether I'm watching them deal with the public. So it's just, it made my job easier. And I appreciate the board's recent, I guess, support of law enforcement. Things going bad out there in the world today, but this board has always supported law enforcement. I appreciate Mr. Kaywood for all his active enforcement, I guess, not the enforcement, but the support, and I really do appreciate that. That's come a long way, some of 40-some years here. It used to be that we, we're proud to be second to everybody else. As always said, as I started out, that we're, if we were 5%, 10% behind somebody, we were doing good, not to complain. Now we're either equal or above people, and it's only because of you all, and I appreciate that. I'm sure everybody behind me appreciates it, too. Y'all have a good day, and thank you for this.
Thank you, Stephen. Board members, comment? Thank you, Stephen. Board members, comments?
Yeah. Steve, fifty years of being a faithful servant. You're an excellent example. You know, I hope some younger people that might be considering a law, a career in law enforcement, would be hearing this and seeing the longevity. But thank you so much for your allegiance to Roanoke County and, you know, just law enforcement itself. I agree with Mr. North, have a very good retirement and good health.
Whenever.
Anyone else?
So, Steve, we just really appreciate all you've done for us. I mean, fifty years is spectacular. I just think that that's unheard of. I would venture to say that that's not duplicated anywhere in the state of Virginia. And so, you've been a shining example of exactly, you know, just what a faithful, loyal employee and servant to the community looks like. We really deeply appreciate all you've done for Roanoke County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Steve, I want to thank you on behalf of all the citizens of Roanoke County, helping keep us safe. And as you mentioned, that's critically important. And I think key role of government, I think our primary goal, is to make sure we have safe streets, safe communities, safe neighborhoods. And you've been part of that for your career, and I want to thank you on behalf of that. Second, I want to ask you, when did you list? Were you twelve years old?
I appreciate. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for your service, and most of all, congratulations and enjoy your retirement, because you've certainly earned it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Steve, on behalf of the board, we want to give you a token of our appreciation as well for the resolution. We can set that down. I think Amy wants to get some pictures.
Okay.
Mr. Turner, come on up. Anyone else in the Sheriff's Department wants to join in? Come on up. You guys are welcome.
Well, let's whichever do it.
Anyone from the Police Department want to join in?
A lot more.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you again, sir.
Enjoy it.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you all. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Item D on our agenda, new business. Item number one, ordinance accepting and appropriating a donation for the Friends of the Roanoke County Public Library in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for use by Roanoke County Library Department. This is the first reading and request for a second reading. Chair recognizes Jim Blanton, Director of Library Services.
Good afternoon. I'm here today to ask for the acceptance and appropriation of the Friends of the Library annual donation of twenty-five thousand dollars to the summer reading program, and also to just acknowledge really the wonderful partnership that we have with the Friends of the Library. They actually just celebrated their thirtieth anniversary supporting the library this past year, which is a really remarkable milestone for this group. And they do a number of things. Some reading's very important, but they've supported any number of initiatives over the years. I'm sure some of which you all are aware of. Some examples include three-D printing services and artificial intelligence programming with Pepper the Humanoid Robot at the library. They support our popular annual mystery night that takes place twice a year. We have birding backpacks we have them to thank for that are available to the community, which includes guides and local tools for local birding. They also, during the pandemic, provided supplemental funding for electronic materials, and we saw such a huge boost in the use of eBooks and the audiobooks. They support advocacy efforts at the state level through their membership in the Virginia Library Association, which results in additional state aid for our budget. And they also support staff and volunteer recognition, which is so important. But certainly, perhaps most important of all, is their support of the annual summer reading program, which is an essential program that we offer every year, which encourages children and teens to read during the summer months as well as adults, fostering a love of reading and making sure that our youth continue to develop their skills over the summer. Last year, program participants read over forty-five thousand books, which is pretty amazing. We hope to blow that out of the water this year. We'll keep it up. And to encourage participation, we offer a variety of activities, ranging from reading goal challenges to providing educational and interactive family programming at all library locations. This summer, our theme is adventure begins at your library, and staff are busy planning a full roster of fun and engaging activities. A new feature this year is a gaming component in which participants can earn special badges for completing activities and participating, excuse me, participating in programs. The focus, as always, is inspiring reading and exploration throughout the entire summer. The Friends truly make all of this possible by providing the funding, support, materials, supplies, performers, and more. They generate that funding primarily through many hours of dedicated work in coordinating annual book sales and the ongoing sale areas at our libraries. And I'll just give a shout out that this, the spring sale is April twenty-seventh through May second. Most recently, they have expanded their efforts to partner on fundraising opportunities with businesses such as Kroger's Community Rewards Program and an annual book fair at Barnes &amp; Noble, and more to come. All of these activities are a significant undertaking, and we deeply appreciate their tireless efforts and dedication in providing support this past thirty years. We thank you for your consideration of the appropriation request, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jim. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance and the schedule of second reading for February the thirteenth, twenty twenty-four?
Mr. Chairman, I would move the approval for first reading of item D one, which is the ordinance accepting the donation of twenty-five thousand dollars from the Friends of the Library.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Radford, seconds?
Either one.
Any discussion? There being no discussion, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item D two, resolution authorizing participation in the Virginia Main Street program by the County Roanoke Department of Economic Development, Exploring Main Street Community. Chair recognizes Danny Poe, Assistant Director of Economic Development.
Good afternoon, Chairman North and members of the board. The item before you is a resolution of support for the Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association's application for the Exploring Main Street program. Valerie Brown, Executive Director of the Greater Williamson Road Business Area Association, is also in attendance today to support this initiative, so thank you. The Exploring Main Street program is housed within the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, and it is designed for community-seeking revitalization. RABBA, as you know, has worked hard over recent years to secure grant funding for programs supporting the Williamson Road corridor. Securing acceptance into the Exploring Main Street program serves as a necessary step for RABBA to pursue additional grant opportunities as it paves the way for their application to the DHCD facade grant program. Included in your packet are copies of the draft application for Exploring Main Street program, as well as a draft application for the facade grant program. Staff does recommend approval of this item, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Or if you have a specific question for Valerie, we welcome this as well.
Questions, board? Ms. Mahoney?
Ms. Poe, are you familiar with the program Roanoke County has through our Economic Development Authority for facade grants? And when I read the materials that are in the agenda, I guess I was hoping that there was a way that if the grant is successful for RABBA, that those two could work together. You see where I'm going?
Yes.
Is there an opportunity to jumpstart both of those programs together?
I don't know that there's the opportunity to jumpstart them together, but I definitely think there is an opportunity to expand upon the parameters or defining the parameters for the economic development grant program that we currently have in place. We have not funded anything with that recently, and so this is a great opportunity for us to look at ways to explore other ways to do that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? There being?
I'll make a motion if you're ready for that.
Well, I was going to make a motion to adopt the resolution, but I'll take a second.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? If not, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Ms. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Thank you, Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association, for coming today.
And thank you very much as well for your support.
Moving on, item E, appointments. Do any board members have an appointment that has not been given to the clerk included in the board report for agenda item E? Okay? Is there a motion to approve the list of appointments set forth in the board report?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Ms. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item F, consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by one resolution in the form or forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion? Okay, is there a motion to adopt all matters on the consent agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? There being none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Ms. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item G, citizens' comments and communications. Are there any citizens willing to address the board that have not submitted a form? Do you have any forms? Okay. That being said, we'll move on to item H, reports. Is there a motion to receive and file the reports that have been included with the agenda under item H?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? There being none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Ms. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item I, reports and inquiries of board members. We'll start with David Radford from Windsor Hills.
Yeah, just one item, just going through that resolution with the Virginia Main Street program and the Greater Williamson Road group that you have over in Hollins. What a great example. I'd love to get that going in my district. Doing great work out there at Williamson Road to coalesce and bring the businesses together and be a spokesperson. It's really all about economic development. I'd like to find some way to carve that out in the Oak Grove area. And Mr. Mahoney and I share Brambleton Avenue going up, so, gosh, there's so many businesses there. But great example, you know, I hope we get the grant on that Virginia Main Street program. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Hooker?
Yeah, I have just a couple of items, and I concur with you. And I feel like in Main Street, West Main Street of Western Roanoke County, we would also benefit from such a great program, and not just in the current businesses, but in also recruiting new business, new restaurants, new vitality in that same corridor. So, kudos for you for setting the standard. We really appreciate what you're doing with RABBA. The second thing is, I had a ribbon cutting just this afternoon. It was kind of unexpected, but what a great turnout for the Virtuous Closet, which is a new virtual fashion business. And it was really sweet to hear about the story of how they came to opening their business, and there was a great turnout today in celebrating that initiation. And then I just want to welcome Tammy. We are so pleased to have you with us and really look forward to working with you, and we're glad to have you here with this first meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Hooker, let's go on to Mr. Mahoney.
A couple of items, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo the comments from Ms. Shepherd welcoming Tammy. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Also, last, let's see, two weeks ago, on January twelfth, I had the opportunity to do a ribbon cutting for Beacon Credit Union. They're right on 419 Electric Road, across from Finks and North Cross. And then, on the thirtieth, next week, we have a ribbon cutting for Us and Associates, an A and E firm, Roanoke County. And my point of wanting to recognize these small businesses is that we work really hard with economic development staff and county administration, because we're always trying to get the big success project of bringing in millions of dollars of new development and lots of employees. But I think we also have to pay attention to the work that our staff does to assist small businesses. My belief is, the small businesses are really the backbone of our community. I believe that the big companies look at us, but they also look at our community, and they see that we have a vibrant, growing community, and that vibrant, growing community is our small business community. And a lot of times, we kind of lose track of them. And I think that's why all of us on the board, we make a big effort to go to the ribbon cuttings for those small businesses. We go to the big ones, too, but the small businesses are the ones that a lot of times kind of get lost in the shuffle. And so, I think it's important to support them. Finally, on the seventeenth of January, Mr. K. Wood and I had a wonderful opportunity to speak to and participate in a program through Regional Chamber of Commerce, the Leadership Roanoke Valley Program. I went through Leadership Roanoke Valley, Roanoke County, back in the early nineties, yikes, many years ago. But I really believe that Leadership Roanoke Valley is critically important to our region. This is the next generation of leaders in our community. And Mr. K. Wood and I had an opportunity to tell a lot of the participants in that program the importance of local government and the effect that local government has on our community. And so, I was happy that the LRV people wanted us to come and talk to them, and I think we had a good program. Madeline Hanlon here is, you're a...
An advisor.
An advisor to LRV. And I think, I know Danny Poe is also active with that. But I want to thank the LRV people for letting Richard and I come and speak to them, and we just had a great time. So, thank you. Nothing further.
Thank you. And now, Tammy, welcome to the board.
Thank you. I just want to take a minute to thank all four of you for the confidence in offering me this position, and I am really excited to do it and looking forward to representing the East County and hoping in any manner that I can to continue with the economic development in the East County as well as in the town of Benton. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and look forward to working with you in Benton as we have future meetings set up.
Yes.
And I'm sure everything will be just fine. Under comments, I've got a few. Carly Foster invited me to have a transportation discussion with Leadership Roanoke County last week, and we did so. And I think we had a good turnout, both virtually as well as in person. And we all had a great time getting to know one another, but we also had lots to talk about on transportation. So, more things to come in the future. Somebody asked me the question, said, "How come you're so passionate about this?" I said, "Well, I'm retired. I don't have anything else to do." Anyhow, I have a lot of energy to burn up, so I do burn it up.
Too true.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Budget amendments. Senator Obenchain, outspoken on Interstate eighty-one, has filed a bill, budget amendment, out of the appropriation for two-hundred-ninety-five-point-five million dollars first year and three-hundred-sixty-five-point-five million the second year out of the general fund. I certainly hope he can get that money, but it's for improvements to address delays, crashes, and significant risks, and accessibility to jobs along the eighty-one corridor. This will equalize the general fund support provided for I-81 with the same that was provided for I-64 in the past. So, we'll see how far that gets down the road. Another budget amendment is Senator Hidd. He has two budget amendments. One is out of the appropriation of twenty million the first year for non-general funds, and another one for... and another one for, from the general fund. In other words, whichever pot has some money that we can get, and I think this is a very strategic move, is provided to complete the replacement of the Roanoke County Career and Technical Education Facility for twenty million dollars. So as you know, we have memorandums of understanding with Salem and Bonnetot County, and we do hope that this amendment sails through the Senate as well as the House and is signed by the governor. And that's all that I have today. Let's move on to item J, work session. Number one, work session to review fiscal year 2023, '24 mid-year revenues and expenditures and a fiscal year '25 CIP update. Lori Geary-Hart will be presenting, along with others in the Budget Department. And momentarily, the board will recess to the third floor for the work session. However, before doing so, I would like to move that the board go into closed session upon the completion of the work session. Item K, closed session. I move to go into closed session pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A, three of the Code of Virginia, for discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where the discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. The subject is property located in the Cave Spring Magisterial District and Section 2.2-3711A, subparagraph one of the Code of Virginia, for discussion of consideration of the assignment of members of the Board of Supervisors to various boards and commissions. And further, Section 2.2-3711A, subparagraph five of the Code of Virginia, for discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or this expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Specifically, the board will discuss potential business location or expansion in the Cave Spring, Catawba, and Windsor Hills Magisterial Districts. Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. The board will now recess to the third floor for the work session. Following the work session, the board will enter into closed session. We now go to...